Good morning, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order at 10:31. We're going to start with item one, which is presentation discussion of risk assessment and audit plan development process. And before, just happy new year to everyone and thank you for being here on this cold day. Ms. Martinez, I'd pass it to you.
Thank you. Good morning, board members. My name is Myra Martinez. I'm the chief internal auditor. Thank you for being here. It's very cold. Get through it. I'll try to be as fast as possible. The first item on the agenda is I'm going to talk to you about the risk assessment and audit plan development process. And this is the annual process that internal audit follows so that we can develop our audit plan. This requirement comes from the Institute of Internal Auditors standards, as well as it's mirrored in our board policy, CFC Local. We are required to develop a risk-based plan to determine the priorities of the internal audit department. This plan, we're required to bring it to the board in April for approval every year. So what is an audit plan? The plan can really be seen as a roadmap for the internal audit department. It outlines the activity of the work that we have planned for the coming year. It serves us prioritize and make sure that we focus our efforts on those areas of highest needs, highest risk for the district. We make sure they're prioritized based on risk and make the best use of the limited internal audit resources that we do have. It's also because of the process that we follow. We meet with various members of management and leadership. It also helps us get buy-in from EPISD management leadership and the Board of Trustees. And finally, because we are very much focused on the priorities for the district, it also helps support EPISD's success. Apologize for that. So the audit plan methodology, there's two parts to it. The first part is the risk assessment. And that is what's going to help us prioritize those areas in terms of risk. So we'll begin to focus on, the presentation will focus on that first part. A risk assessment is a process that we follow for identifying and analyzing risks that could keep the district from achieving its goals, strategic priorities, and objectives. The risk assessment is used by internal audit to develop our audit plan. And I've just provided the definition from the Institute of Internal Auditors. The first step in the risk assessment is to make sure that I, as the leader of our internal audit, understand what EPISD's priorities are. And that's not just reviewing our website and documents, but it also means that as I attend the monthly scheduled meetings for the Board of Trustees, special meetings, other meetings where there's a discussion of the district's plans and priorities for the coming year or years to come, that I have a clear understanding of where the district wants to go and what are the priorities for the district in terms of programs, plans, departments, et cetera. The next step is to identify the audit universe. This consists of EPISD's key risk areas that could be subject to an audit, and we call those auditable units. And those typically include, in the past, we've divided those in terms of departments that have those key programs, functions, and processes that contribute to EPISD's priorities, that can noticeably impact EPISD, and that justify the cost of a control. Because really, in an organization as large as EPISD, the audit universe can be very, very large. But we really need to focus our efforts on those areas where those departments and the roles that they have are really critical to meeting the mission of the district and the priorities in terms of the strategic blueprint. And also, we can have controls. For example, I like to give an example of the campuses. They have activity funds, and they may have a petty cash of $100. So we're not going to hire a security guard full-time at $50,000 for that control. It doesn't justify the cost of a control. So we also want to focus on those areas where we really do see that it's worth EPISD making an investment in those type of controls because we are getting our return on that investment. So after we identify the audit universe, we are going to determine the risk factors that are going to help us measure the risk for those different auditable units. The Institute of Internal Auditors recommend two different approaches for documenting risks. One of them is the specific risk approach, which we identify the risks associated with a specific auditable unit in the universe. We don't use that for our risk assessment process, but we do use that for our engagement-level risk assessment. And I can come back and talk to the board about that at a later time. But what we use for the risk assessment is the risk factor approach. So these are risk factors that are identified that are common to auditable units, to all auditable units. And we're used to develop our audit plan because it's easier to measure across the board. These risk factors are more common to those auditable units. And the ones that we focus on, that we're focusing on for this year, are these eight risk factors. The likelihood factors include control and the environment, changes in the unit, the complexity of monitoring activities in the unit, the history of audits or evaluations that have been conducted for that unit or the process. And then the risk factors that help us measure impact are, one, how critical the unit is to supporting the district and its success, the financial impact, the regulatory compliance associated with the areas. The higher the regulatory compliance, the higher the risk. And then the last one is the public importance, meaning what is important to the public for that year. And then the next step is to gather relevant information to those risk factors. And we gather that information through questionnaires that we send to management. We have designed questions that address or help us gather information for all those eight specific risk factors. And we send them to various levels of management. And then after collecting the questionnaires, we review them to help us gather that information we need. And we also schedule meetings with cabinet-level administrators to gain insight on those risk And then, once we get the response, we also gather information from our ERP system to include financial information, staffing information. We go through the organizational charts of the district to determine any changes in the structure of the district. And then we go back and we assess and prioritize. So to try to make it as less subjective as possible, least subjective as possible, we do define for each risk factor using the scoring, using a three-point scale, with one representing the lowest level of risk and three representing the highest. So I provided an example for the financial impact. So for example, based on the financial impact, that would be the money that's generated by the unit, the money that's allocated to the unit, or the money that is processed by the unit. So we look at low risk as being less than 1% of the district's annual budget. Medium risk is between 1% and 5% of EPISD's annual budget. And then if the allocation or the money that's generated by that unit is more than 5% of the district's annual budget, then we consider that area high risk. And again, we go back. For each one of those risk factors, we've defined the three-point scale and defined what each one means. So we've collected the data. We've defined the risk factors. We defined what it means to be low risk, medium, high risk. So now we go back and we assess and prioritize. For every auditable unit, we conduct the scoring. And then we determine the risk rank in terms of likelihood and impact based on the score that we've defined here. Risk score is anywhere from 4 to 6.9, 7 to 9.9 is medium risk, and then 10 and above is a high-risk area. So after we do this, we prioritize, we sort those areas in terms of risk, where we have the top risk being those that are medium, high, high-high, or high-medium in terms of risk, likelihood, and impact. Those that are medium, and then those that are low. So now that we have those higher-risk areas, we go back and we look at the resources that have been allocated to internal audit. And we're actually going through that process. Every department is going through their budget, identifying the budget needs for the following year. And then I'll begin to have those conversations also with the board as far as the resources that I expect to have for next year in terms of people, but in terms of the training that we might need to make sure that we can audit or provide advisory services to the areas that end up making it into our audit plan. So we reconcile the resources with the high-risk areas. And then we go back, we develop a list of projects. And then we go out and we propose and solicit feedback. And at that point, if I need to meet with another cabinet-level administrator a second time, I will do that. I will meet with Messiah Vedra also to get her feedback. Typically, I meet with her sometime in the middle, and then at this point, again, just so that I keep her in the loop as far as what we're looking at for next year's audit plan. And I reach out to all board members, and I schedule one-on-one meetings with each one of you to discuss the proposed projects based on risk. At that point, we also decide if there are some projects that maybe didn't make it to the top of the list because they were high-risk, but it's an area that we know that we want to look at because it might be an up-and-coming priority. At that point, we'll tweak and adjust that list of projects as needed. And based on that feedback, then we'll go to step eight, which is to finalize the audit plan. I do bring it to the audit committee for review in April during the audit committee meeting. And then for number nine is when I submit it to the board for approval in August. This would have been August of 2025. I apologize for that. And then we will implement the plan next fiscal year, which is the fiscal year of 2026 for next year's audit plan. So again, high-risk auditable units will likely make it to our audit plan. If they don't, our standards require that we justify the reason why we didn't include it in our audit plan. But we also want to set aside time to make sure that we're following up on corrective action plan reviews from prior-year audits. We also want to find opportunities for advisory engagements, whether the area was high-risk, or again, it's an area of up-and-coming concern, or that we want to be proactive rather than reactive. And we want to consider that including in our audit plan. There's also times that we discover risks through our audits or through our investigations throughout the year. So we have those discussions with Messiah Vedra and with the board. Or that maybe management, leadership, or the board members themselves have identified of areas of concern. The proposed audit plan, once we've gathered all that information and developed a plan, that will be submitted to the board in approval in April of 2025. And I think that's all I have for this presentation. Do I have any questions? It's very similar to what we've done from year to year. We do tweak questions as we're gathering information. We try to get creative on how we're doing things, try to change it up, do data analysis, a lot of data analysis as well. But again, I don't think this is the first time most of you have seen this presentation, so.
Justice Hernandez?
It's not a question, but possibly it could be. But for those that are somewhat new, but not so new, because you've now been with us over six months, but if you could, over the years, Myra, just give us a general observation from you regarding examples of the high risk and as a result of doing the audit, or what you do to figure out if there's opportunities or challenges for us. What are those that you can think of in the top of your head that have been significant for us to realize that your efforts and all that you do is helping our district?
I can tell you-
It's a loaded question.
It is. But I do think that as we go through our audits, we have found opportunities for improvement in the areas that we've selected. So I think this risk-based planning does seem to work. I think also getting the feedback from the superintendent, you know, as we're communicating and talking, and she knows that she has her priorities for her people. How can we help supplement some of that by doing timely reviews? I think that's been helpful. And I'm going to present on the status of the activity report, but in terms of attendance and truancy, you know, the districts work really hard in redesigning a lot of the controls that are associated with that process. And now when we're able to go back and do these audits that are focused on this year and not the past, when we do audits in the past, there's nothing we can do about them. They're in the past. We just need to move forward. But when we can do audits at the same time as these changes are implementing, I think we can provide more timely feedback to Messiah Vedra and her team because there's still an opportunity to address those, to tweak, to, you know, make, whether it's the problems in the operations or in the design, there's still an opportunity to fix it. And that doesn't mean that the audit findings may have been, at that point, the snapshot, but we still have an opportunity to fix them. So I think in those areas where we're able to do this-year scope, real-time, and I think Messiah Vedra asked that from the beginning, you know, you're still looking at the past before I came, let's look at what's happening now. And I think those probably are more helpful to the team rather than always going back and looking at the past.
And what prompted me to just mention all this is because of the fact that I think this is the first time I'd seen where, on a five-year, there's a rotation basis. I wasn't aware of that.
We try to do a rotation. There's times, I can tell you, there's times that we may do a similar audit in the year that follows, but maybe we just tweak some of the objectives based on what we've seen in the past. But, you know, I think our focus has been on high-risk areas. I do want to go more to where we're doing more on a rotation basis, where we're covering more the district's risk on a five-year, five-year to six-year basis.
I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Dr. Lover?
Just a quick question, also pretty loaded. Just wanted to thank you for your presentation first, and also ask if you could say a little bit about how international and national standards come into play when developing how we approach audits here at EPISD, and how you've been working to make sure that we're up to speed and up to par on all levels. So thank you very much again.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I think the standards are a great framework for any internal audit department to follow. And as you know, last year, we were audited. We had an external audit. And I think that really helps making sure that we have a sound, like a sound, something to stand on and to make sure that we're doing quality work and that it can withstand outside scrutiny if somebody were to come in and look at our working papers. But even from the audit plan development piece, I think following the best practices does help make sure that we are finding the right projects to take on. Okay. So we can move on to the next. So the next one is, this is our quarterly internal audit activity report that we provide to the audit committee, and then it also, as you know, goes to the board. I've submitted this quarterly activity report to the board, and it's part of the consent, one of the consent items on the January regular board meeting. So I've included in the activity report is the status of the 2024-2025 audit plan, as well as some proposed changes that, you know, after I meet with the board next month, if you all are okay with it, I'll submit it for approval. And I'm also providing a status on corrective action plans. Some acronyms for the board. So the audit plan covers the current fiscal year, July 2024 through June 2025. This activity reports covers the first half of the year, July 1st through December 31st. We started off the year with 18 planned projects that were approved by the board in April of 2024. There's been a lot of change, there's been a lot going on this year. So we're proposing some changes to the audit plan based on the activity that we've had going on for this year. The first one is related to the attendance and truancy audit. We submitted them as two separate engagements. But for efficiency purposes, logistically, it's really been working out where we combine those into one audit and then make them campus-based audits. So we are combining attendance and truancy, but we are, instead of doing one of each, we're doing five in total. So we're visiting five campuses. We've already done two so far this year, and I think realistic to do three more for the rest of the year. So the net change there would be to add three engagements to the audit plan, if that makes sense. Okay. And then the next change is we do have a planned activity funds advisory engagement. And the purpose of that engagement was really to support the campus accounting and some of the processes they have. I think specific examples provided to us was the process that they have for fundraising activities and how they approve and monitor fundraising activities. I know the department has already been working on that. So I really think that because of all the changes we've had throughout the year with principals and administrators, I think it would probably be a more beneficial audit to go back and focus on activity funds themselves. So my suggestion here is to do campus-based and to do an audit rather than advisory engagement to support some of those principals that have been asking us to look at their financials as they're new to their campus, so they can get some insight as to what's been done. And this would be one that we would be looking probably at this semester. So it's still this fiscal year, but it's a little bit on the past so that they can kind of get some insight on where the campuses are. So that wouldn't be to remove the audit, to remove the engagement, but to change it from advisory to audit. Yes, Ms. Vedra?
Just a question. Is there a thought, especially at the high school level where we have activity funds, that whenever there's a new principal or a change in leadership at a high school, has there ever been a thought that we would engage in just, I mean, that would be the natural protocol to conduct an audit so that the incoming principal would have kind of an outlook on the state of activity funds as they're walking in?
You know, our district used to do that many years ago. But what would happen is a lot of our resources would be allocated to just those campuses. And there were times that, yes, something would be brought up that was high-risk and it was of a concern, but it was one out of 30, maybe. So I think if we want to talk about, you know, really assigning internal audit to do audits based on just changes rather than risk, then it's going to take us away from those higher-impact projects. So we can come up with some sort of methodology where we look at those campuses that do have the highest risks based on analysis. And then those are the ones we focus on during the spring semester and even moving forward. But I think to just do them because there's a change, it might just be taking away internal audit resources from other higher-risk areas. That would be my concern. But we can have that conversation as we're developing the plan. If we leave the plan, you know, added the three engagements and then the five engagements that I discussed during the last quarterly audit committee meeting, then our audit plan would be at 26 engagements. So I really think that it's not realistic for my team to do the 26. So I am proposing to remove two projects from our audit plan. The first one is on the one-to-one device audit. So there's reason why I'm proposing that one. And it's because we just, you'll see later in the report, we've closed out the power-up cap. We're able to close it out. I know that the team in school resources, as well as school leadership, and the IT department is working through the first year of implementing the changes that they've made. And I think they're still trying to work out the bugs and pivot as needed. I think if we did an audit now, we're going to have similar issues. I think my recommendation would be to wait at least the rest of this year so that they have one full year of implementing those changes, and then come back next fiscal year and do that audit. And I think also it would give us the resources to reallocate internal audit resources to departments, to other engagements that I think are achievable and realistic to complete. The other audit is on change management for IT. We do have an engagement plan for IT, but I think at this point, the IT department has a lot of competing priorities. I think one of the changes is in teams with the edFi changes that the state has brought up, as well as building up the, some of the, making sure that they fill all their positions. So I really think, again, doing this type of audit at this time, my results, well, I think it would be best to let them focus on those high priorities and then come back next year and revisit and consider doing that audit at that time. And again, I looked at all the audits to see what would be realistic, what's the highest priority, the needs. And those are the two engagements that I am proposing to be postponed till next year. Any questions, any comments on that?
I have, again, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but in regards to your audits and the way you've done it, I think that's amazing. But at the same time, I know that they're only spot audits at certain areas. How do we implement the changes and the good things that have happened from here or the results from there to make sure that everyone else that wasn't audited, or maybe by chance, they just didn't catch it? How do we know that those changes are being made? I don't know.
I think that's less of an audit function and more of an administrative function. I mean, I think that, again, I'll reiterate a little bit of what Myra said in terms of, you know, how the audits help us with improvement and continuing to raise the level of expectation in terms of our systems, our processes, you know, and creating the conditions for suc- in terms of our systems, our processes, you know, and creating the conditions for success. And so, once we get an audit, once we go through a cap, you know, those things really help us improve and we continue to move, move forward, you know, with those improvements. But I think those are more fidelity of implementation and really having system controls within each department to make sure that if we have a plan and the goal for the plan is for us to accomplish A, that we have mechanisms and metrics for us to be able to determine whether we're moving swiftly in that direction, right? But I'm not sure that, you know, it's, it's, it's audits function always to, to determine whether, you know, everything is moving along as it should on an ongoing basis, that, which is why it's important for them to spot check and do their dipstick audits, especially in areas that pose the highest risk to the district if we're not paying close enough attention to it. Attendance being, being one of the ones in our current reality right, right now.
Well, thank you for that clarification because that was a question I've always had. I wanted to know how are we making it work now that you're, you're in the groove and making everything? And that's just a, a systems.
Right. And I think it's kind of what you say, we can do all these audits, but if we do the audit and then walk away, we don't know if, if, you know, the corrections or, or if controls are being put in place to mitigate some of the risks that were identified during the audit. But I think that's the, that's where the corrective action plans come in. And I think Ms. Ayvedra brought that up, where leadership management take on the, the task of developing a corrective action plan. We do monitor those and based on the outcome of those corrective action plan reviews, we can also reassess during the risk assessment process that we just talked about to see as, do we, is it time, has it been a year, two years since we did that audit? Have we seen any concerns that have come up since then? Is it time to go back and revisit and redo another audit? We can also, you know, determine during that risk assessment process and audit plan development process. But Ms. Ayvedra's correct. I mean, internal audit has the responsibility. We, we're considered a, you know, third line of defense. The first line is management, second line is, you know, mid-management, leadership, but really they're the ones that are responsible for controls overall. We, in order to keep our independence and objectivity, we shouldn't be designing controls, we shouldn't be implementing controls. But we can go back and again, like Ms. Ayvedra, go, go back and do testing or do, do our audits or corrective action plan follow-up reviews to at least see that it wasn't just ignored, there was something that was put in place to try to mitigate the risk.
And I would like to see President Iravali or Ms. Ayvedra, if possible, at the end of the year, when we do our evaluation for Myra, she, she feels this way, as what, how we've done or how well she's done, not just she, but her team and all that we've done. But if maybe we could have periodically, maybe at your evaluation, and not just for us, but for the public to know, we've been working on this since so-and-so year, and now this is the outcome, and this is how we're going to proceed or what we need to do, I think, in our part, is we need to boast about our successes and let the public know that, you know, this isn't just something that was just, you know, recently thought of, but rather because we have a new administration and, and whatever the case may be, how the changes have, have changed us and made us better and made others know that this is an issue not just for all of us internally, but how it affects the public or, and our children. And that, I think, would be good for us to, to be able to, I don't know, let them know in a, in a public opinion ad or something to the effect of what we're doing here in our district and how we're improving or what the challenges we've had over the years. So we couldn't toot our horns.
I, I know that at the end of the year, you do do kind of a summary, you know, audit report.
I do.
And we typically do it at a committee meeting like this.
In August.
I guess one thing that we could consider is that even though it's, you know, typically we do that, and then it's on the board agenda, but it's on the consent agenda, and Myra doesn't typically come back, you know, to the, although these audit committee meetings are, you know, subject for public review as well. So I know that we, we do some of that, but, you know, we, we might need to go back to the drawing board and just think about additional ways that, again, we can say, as a result of this year's audit plan, you know, here are the findings, here's, you know, how we're responding to those, and here's how these things will continue to move the district, you know, to help us meet our goals of X, Y, and Z. I mean, you know.
Right. We could definitely brainstorm on how, I, I do provide that report in August to the board, and like you said, it's during the audit committee, but not the regular meeting. So maybe we take not the entire presentation, but kind of like the highlights and provide it to the board in August. Or I can definitely talk to you, trustee Ednandez, and then to Ms. Ayvedra about how we can go about putting something together for the August meeting, just to review the prior year. Thank you. Okay. So the next, let's continue with the report. We're talking about the internal audit status. This chart on this slide is based on the project count of 24, and as summarized here, we've completed 29% or seven of the engagements in the plan. We also have nine of the engagements in progress, and then we have not started working on eight of the engagements, which I'll elaborate on in the slides that follow. For reporting purposes, I've split up the engagements into two groups. The first one includes the audit advisory and contingency engagements, which includes 14 projects. The other group is on the corrective action plans, and I'll cover that in a bit. For, in this section, in this group, three engagements have been completed. Two engagements are in the reporting phase, three are in the fieldwork phase, and one is in the planning phase, and we've not started working on five of the engagements at the bottom. As you see, the, the ones that are pending are more attendance and truancy audits, the activity funds audit, should the board approve it to be an audit rather than advisory, and then an audit of the 504 program. And then on the second, second group of projects is the corrective action plan follow-up reviews. For these, as you can see, we've, we were able to close quite a few of them this quarter. We're able to close four of them, and then we have the rest of the, that are in the, the following three, the ESIR PMS and the discipline caps are in progress, and then the maintenance, special ed, and levers have not started as, they won't be until the cap is developed for these. So the next, this slide and the slide that follows covers the results of the engagements completed during this quarter. The first one is on the attendance and truancy audit for Coronado High School. And I want to say that this is one of those examples, Ms. Ednandez, where we've, you know, Ms. Ayvedra and her team have been working really hard on attendance and the processes that they've put in place to, to address some of the attendance issues that we've had as a district in term, and when you think about it in, or I like to explain it from an audit perspective, there's two pieces, two controls. There's the design of the controls, and that includes the planning, the development of procedures, the development of training and providing the training, and then there's the operation of the controls. So we know that there's been extensive redesign in the controls. So now what we're doing is we're going out and we're testing the operation of those controls. So we plan to go out to five schools, and we're going to focus on the high schools. And having conversations with, with principals to make sure that they understand the, the procedures, and then going through our test work, that's going to focus on attendance accuracy, on truancy, and we're also testing average daily attendance coding at the campuses. The great thing about these audits, even though you might see the results, you know, this isn't, it's, it's, it's not set in stone that, you know, the, the findings are as such because the campus still has an opportunity to correct these, because we don't submit the attendance data to the state until the end of the year and that during the summer PMS submission. So that's what's great about these audits, that there's still an opportunity for admin to go back and to address some of the findings that we've identified. We also provide the principal with a snapshot of their dashboard, which provides just a summary of what their cumulative attendance rate is, the number of absences that they have, the days of the week that they had, they have the most absences, as well as the grade level where they have the most absences, and then the students who have, who have three or more or 10 or more absences. And this is, the dashboard is a great tool that is developed, was developed by the analytics team, and principals can really use this to, to really see where some of the areas of concern are for their campus and then really drill down to put a plan together or to, to implement some of the, the controls that the district has put in place. So we have, and we summarize the results of this audit in these four slides, four bullet points on this slide. The first one is that we did see that the campus had 11,500 approximately unexcused absences as of December. Again, unexcused absences are those that we haven't received a reason from the parent to tell us why the student was absent. So there's three different, I guess, you can look at it from three different perspectives here, is there's an absence, we need to get a note from the parent, so there's instances where they're not providing the note. There's also the keeping up with the workload, so the attendance clerks need to make sure that they are getting all that documentation and entering the appropriate reason code for the student in the system so that we can make sure that we either can get funding for it or it's at least an excused absence. And then there's a piece on the truancy side, meaning do we have kids that are just not coming to school, and we need to follow up with notice of absence letters or, or, and developing a 45-day attendance improvement plan. There was some missing documentation or incorrect absence codes for, for the student absences that, for absences that were tested. And then in addition, we found some issues relating to the six-week self-audits, daily procedures, and supporting documentation. So for example, six-week self-audit is something that's to be conducted by the campus to self-identify if they're having any issues, and then we have attendance taken by teachers, making sure that you're following up when teachers are not taking attendance. Those are some of the examples. And then there was missing documentation to support ADA coding for one student, and that's really important because that code defines what kind of funding we're going to get for the student as far as do we get full-day attendance, half-day attendance, or do we not get funding for those students? And in this case, I think it was related to documentation residency, that the student was living in our district, and the, I think that documentation was out of date, it hadn't been collected during registration this year. And then the last one is on the notice of absence letters. I think we, in this case, we are seeing that those notices are going out, that the campuses are mailing those out. We found one instance out of 10 that did that, where it wasn't mailed. We also are finding, we're following up to make sure that those return NOAs, that the campuses are following up on those accordingly. So we've had conversations with campus administrators about making sure they're following up on that. And then the next piece is on the 45 attendance improvement plans. So in this case, we did find that the campus had not developed for the ones that we selected in our sample. So that's something that they can still do. They need to go back with students and develop those plans along with the students and the parents, because that's really going to help cut back on the unexcused absences then with that we do have that are truly unexcused. And that's it for the Coronado audit. We also finished up for corrective action plan follow-up reviews where we're able to close out the corrective action plans. The first one was the power-up audit. We found that management implemented 17 of the 18 activities in the cap to address the findings and the recommendations. One activity was found to not be effectively implemented. This was related to campuses doing inventory, and they did the inventory, it was just cleaning up inventory data. And I think that's where they still need to follow up with schools and make sure that, that the inventory is done and that it's, it's not just going through the process of doing the inventory, but coming back and reconciling and making sure that if we don't have items anymore, that they're taken off our inventory or that if they switch locations, et cetera. We also finished a review for the transcript audit where we found that management implemented all activities in the corrective action plan, and the corrective action plan has been closed. And this is one of those really positive corrective action plans where one of my team members just got a visit from the counseling department where they've really made some efforts to automate and the tracking of students as they progress through their program, their graduation programs. And this has been a manual process for so many years, and they have been working very closely with IT to automate that, to build reports, and they were so excited because I think when they first, we had the conversation of automating that, it was, it was, it's, it's hard when you've been doing manual process for such a long time. So to have some, a member of that team come and talk about how they've moved and they've progressed and they're using technology to monitor that, I think it's really, could make a significant impact in making sure that we're monitoring when kids are not on track to graduate. So that was, I think, a really positive outcome in this corrective action plan, not just the plan itself, but I think just the team and, and looking at, of, there's a possibility of doing things a different way, and then having a positive outlook on how you can make changes and it is, it is to better district processes. We also were able to close a corrective action plan follow-up review on a wage and hour concern. There were six activities that were implemented, and the principal at this campus was awesome. They were on it, they finished the activities on time, and we were able to close it. So it was a really positive experience working with the principal and school leadership, and I think in this case, we worked with HR and payroll. And, you know, to your comment, Ms. Ayvedra, this was a very, this was an isolated incident at a campus, but in, in one of the outcomes of, of, of this audit, it wasn't even in the cap, but the HR department has implemented some more, implemented some changes in how they communicate with principals, letting them know about expectations for wage and hour and how employees work, our, for hourly employees. And I think they've made some changes where they're starting to send notices and reminders and providing that education to our campus, well, not just campus, actually, it's also central office administrators. So I think even though this was very, like an isolated incident, I think in this case, HR and payroll were very proactive in getting that information out there for the whole district to, to benefit from, from this. And then the last one was on the compilation of truancy audit results. The school, Student Parent Services Department developed the corrective action plan to address some of the more common findings from last year's audits for truancy. The corrective action plan has been implemented, and we will be testing through our truancy audits, again, the operation of, of some of the changes and the designs of those controls. Any questions? Okay. So.
Dr. Lever?
I do have one question. It's a little conceptual. How do you determine when a problem might be systemic versus isolated? And I know that might be administration's job ultimately, but what, what, what are you looking for when it comes to something like the attendance issues? Is it campus-specific versus something that might be a problem of policy? So is that something that you're doing at that level, or is that something that is left to the administration is the question?
It is. It's something that we do as part of our audits as we're selecting. I know Ms. Ms. Ednandez said about that we kind of, or Ms. Ayvedra also said, we kind of take a, like a dipstick of what is. We make sure that as we're selecting our sample, that there's a lot of data analysis behind that sample, because we want to make sure that our sample is representative. So when we're doing an audit that is of an entire district process, it is, it is, we can see if it is systemic, if we see that it's occurring at multiple locations. With the attendance issues, we've done an attendance audit in the past that's been district-wide, but what we are seeing also in our campus-based ones is that the, the campuses are very unique, and I think they have different reasons for the issues that they're going through related to attendance and truancy. But even at the end, for example, for truancy last year, we were able to see that at every single campus we visited, there were some common findings, and that's where we, we can see, okay, this seems to be something that's more systemic across like secondary campuses, for example. So that's where we can come back and do those compilations of, you know what, we're going to do, we're going to issue a report for the entire year because we see that this isn't just on a campus-by-campus basis. The district needs to implement some changes to controls that will impact all campuses because this appears to be systemic. So it's a lot of data analysis, it's a lot of testing representative samples, and then also paying attention to our results and, and tying the pieces together.
A quick follow-up on that. How, how often do you translate your findings into financial terms, so into dollars saved? Is that something that's standard, or is that something that is still a work in progress? Wherever possible. I know there's convenience.
No, I can tell you wherever possible. I have board members, I have a, a board that is, that does want to see that. What's the true impact? And I, I, you know, I, my team can tell you that even as we're writing up findings, when I do the first review of their findings, my question is always going to be, so what? Why should the, why should the superintendent care? Why should the board care? And we quantify, and sometimes that can be financial, sometimes it's not financial, but it could still be impactful to the district in other ways. So we do that every opportunity we get with our audits. And I, I would say it's not even, we're working on it, it's just there are some, some areas where it's difficult to do, but whenever possible, we do it.
I, I think in, in a lot of cases, Dr. Leverage, you know, especially when the risk could be financial or there's a risk of non- be financial or there's a risk of non-compliance that could be detrimental to the district, you know, you know, from the state or in terms of the integrity of our data and things like that. And I think that, you know, it's been my experience with the audit department that they're really good at sharing with me, here are the patterns that we see in our findings. And when I see patterns like that in findings, then I know that it may be a greater issue that we have to pay attention to organizationally versus, you know, we saw this twice out of, you know, so we think that that may be specific to, or a lot of times Myra can tell me, you've got a new person handling this at this campus and that is why this ball was dropped and why we see this at this campus, but we don't see that prevalent, you know, across others. So, you know, which is, which is the beauty of internal audit as well. So. A superintendent saying that there's beauty in internal audit, right?
You might, you might be the first ever. We might be the first ever, but I appreciate that. So move on to the next part of the presentation, which is on open corrective action plans. At this point, we just have three. We have the ESER PMS and the Student Discipline Cap. Those were open during the spring of 2024 and we've been working closely with management to review evidence for those activities as they're completed. The completion percentage for each is, is in this report. I can tell you that 24.02, which is the ESER audit, since I submitted this report, they've jumped up to 80%. They're down to just one activity that is open and it's not due yet. And then the PMS audit is at 58% and then the discipline audit is at 56%. As far as the number of activities that are closed versus open, again, the 2402, which is the ESER, as of now, they have four closed and one open. Since we came back from the break, evidence was provided and we're able to close two of them. The PMS audit, there were seven audits, seven activities that have been closed, five are still open. And then for the discipline audit, there's seven activities that are still open. And then this provides the due date ranges for upcoming activities. When we submitted the report, the ESER audit had two past due activities. We have received the evidence that those activities have been implemented and they were closed earlier this week. And then on the others, we have one activity that's coming due in the next 30 days for, this one, I'm like, I'm losing, I'm sorry, in 31 to 60 days, most of them are due in the next two months. And then we have two activities that are not due in 90 days or, or after that. But we're moving along. We've been working with management to get the evidence. We do believe that all of these three caps can be closed this year. The Student Discipline Audit, I think I mentioned it during the last audit committee meeting, I hadn't received the extension, but I did receive the extension since then. And those activities, seven activities are due by the end of this month. And then for the ESER cap, as of the date of this report, these activities were passed due, but again, those, that evidence has been, since then been provided. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Hernandez?
In regards, Myra, to that slideshow, it was like four slides back from the end. That one. If I recall, when we knew we were going to be getting audited or we needed to follow up on our ESER funding, how do we know that we are, with what you're doing, I'm sure it's okay for us here, but there were some new regulations, if I can recall, regarding ESER fundings and how it was going to be monitored. Are we in line with what's being asked in that regard?
I don't.
Do we know?
I don't know the regulations, Ms. Hernandez. I do know that there's been an extension on the, the, the timeline for closing it out, but Mr. Voskas is here, I think he can probably address your question.
I'm just curious to know because I just wanted to know, for me being in the accounting world and in the grants world, how do we know that we were lining up ourselves? And, and not to say I don't think we are, but I just want to know how we're, we were able to do that.
Well, in, in some instances, I mean, of course, we had an audit with, with internal, but I know that TEA also had several check-ins. And so TEA throughout the ESER process and distribution, you know, we have our contact with TEA, they have their calls with Mr. Voskas and his department to make sure that we're on track and that we're not. And whenever there's a question, there are some times where they ask us for additional evidence to back up, you know, that we've met, you know, whatever compliance piece is there. But TEA has, along with our internal audit, TEA has, has monitored the process throughout. I'll hand it over to Mr. Voskas so he can answer your question about changes and regulations other than the extension of, of closing out projects.
Trustee Hernandez, good morning. I'm Daniel Voskas, the Fund Development Education Foundation Officer. To Superintendent Saavedra's point, that's absolutely correct. Between ESER 1, 2, and now our large ESER 3 project, we've been evaluated every year by TEA and they take a look at all of our expenses, our drawdowns and our utilization of funds as it aligns to the allowable uses of funds. And through every one of those audits, we've been very clear. We haven't had anything come back or anything get flagged for an inappropriate use of funds. Last year, we had a site visit where TEA was physically onsite with the district and they looked for some of our capital assets. We missed two things on how we were tracking some things internally, but we had processes in place to address that, so nothing was flagged or gigged. We had an immediate response, so we were, we were very, very good. We've been very, very clear. And given the amount of money that we received as a district compared to what we have done and how we've utilized, we are nowhere near any of TEA's red flag or audit lists, so we've done very, very good in that regard. And to the point that Ms. Saavedra just made, there was an extension allowed for the liquidation period that didn't give us an extended period on utilizing the funds, but making sure that the funds that were properly procured prior to September 30th of 2024 had the appropriate amount of time to get liquidated. And that was primarily things like our contracted services for items like curriculum and instruction materials, but also our big HVAC projects. So we think over the course of the last four years, since the funding started to come out through the American Rescue Plan, we've demonstrated a lot of integrity, not only in our internal processes, but how we're managing and overseeing the funds. And we haven't been flagged or gigged in any capacity by TEA or the Department of Ed through their audits.
So just in general, then, it wasn't anything out of the ordinary or so much different than what we had needed to do for other grad compliance?
No, ma'am. And I, what I would tell you is the only real big difference is because of the way the funding was distributed in the emergency response effort, there were a lot of regulations that were designed or modified as we went through. But because of our internal processes and our communication with TEA, we were always in front of those things. And we were, we, we did a very good job with how we utilized our funds collectively between financial services. The, the budget department and our procurement department worked really, really closely with fund development to make sure that all of those systems were in place and we operated collectively. So it was, it was a very collaborative effort throughout all of the ESER phases.
Well, thank you.
Okay. No problem.
Ms. Saavedra, the only question I have is with the Coronado engagement completed and the findings that come out of it, it's showing that we still have attendance issues, right? And I know we're not, that's up to $700,000 that we can recapture, so it doesn't mean we're going to get 100%.
Right, right.
Because that's, that's not possible in reality. How is that going to inform or how is that informing the steps that you're taking to kind of rectify? And then do check-ins across our other campuses to ensure that this is not a, a repeating pattern?
Right. Well, I know that we've had discussions with Department of School Leadership. I've also had an extensive discussion with Myra because I do believe that as we've looked at the audit findings that we have and as we've instituted some of our system controls with attendance, it keeps going back to our greatest challenge in overcoming and improving, you know, our attendance rates. It really points back to the high school level and the attention that we really need to pay. One of the things that we've noticed is that our data shows that there's significant work that needs to be done when we think about our ninth grade students. Because I, I think that as I've looked at data over the last two years that we've been tracking, ninth grade continues to be the highest incident, incidence of absences. And then we are also able to see that on certain days of the week, that escalates more than, than usual. So I think that, you know, what, what I've talked to Myra about is that we really need to start now, rather than just an organizational global, because we've put in the systems controls, I think we're going to have to start peeling back the onion to, I think, a level of specificity that truly targets, okay, what is it about the freshman, about ninth grade and, you know, their struggle with consistent attendance? And, you know, so, so I think it's going to be those kinds of dig in, really peel back the onion, rather than the broad brush organizational systems that we've put in place. Because I do believe that those organizational systems are working, but we need more, you know, in terms of specificity, because the ninth grade is really hitting us. And, and then I think the next grade level is 10th grade. Fridays are an issue as well. So if I think about those three points, we, we really have to develop systems, controls and strategies on how, because it might be an issue at Coronado with ninth graders that might be very different than the issue and the strategy that we would have to employ maybe at a different campus in terms of ninth grade. But I also think that if I think about organizational controls that still may be contributing to that is as we think about the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, there's probably more that we could do to facilitate a stronger, healthier transition from middle school to high school that may also serve to improve, you know, some of our attendance challenges. The last thing I would say is that I've also talked to Dr. Gonzalez about possibly the need to designate a person at the high school level whose job it is to work attendance, you know, comprehensively. And so we're going back as we're in the budget development season to look at what entitlement money might be available to us that we could strategically use at the high school level to specifically address some of these, you know, attendance issues that we've not been able to overcome with our organizational, you know, system controls at this point. So, I mean, there's still work to be done. The good news is that we're looking at data to help us, you know, kind of drill down to what those specific strategies need to be.
And the other point is, I can't remember the data point specifically, I think it was the attendance plans?
Yes. The attendance improvement plan.
Correct. Thank you, the 45-day plans. Those not being done, is that a byproduct of how cumbersome they are and the burden it puts? Or is that just a systems thing that we have to address and manage?
I think it's just, I, I think it's more of a management and making sure that we're consistent with that. I, I, I don't believe that it's significantly cumbersome. I think that you see, especially at the elementary and middle school level, more consistency when you think about your 45-day plans, less consistency at the high school. I think that they, you know, that the attitude at the high school in some cases is the onus is, is on the kids, but we really need to flip that script, you know? And this is where the, the alpha team becomes really, really critical and important. And not only the alpha team, but also the counselor team, the social workers. And again, I think that we still have work to do in making sure that we leverage some of our support system positions to specifically assist with 45-day planning, right? Because yeah, an assistant principal can develop a 45-day plan, but the plan is only something that's on paper. To truly institute that plan is going to take a team effort, right? And so I think that that's where, you know, we, we, we need to improve more on how we leverage what we have at our disposal to truly, but, but I don't believe that the reason why they're not being done consistently is because they're cumbersome. It really is just a shift in, at the high school level, kids need support, even though they're older and they should be more responsible. You know, they, it, it could be that there's a kid that has a number of younger siblings and their attendance challenge has to do with the fact that they've been given the responsibility to shepherd their siblings, you know, before, you know, they get to school. And that could be an individual, but it could be rectified with a 45-day plan, you know? But again, it's going to take the social worker, it's going to take the assistant principal, it's going to take a number of people sitting down, meeting with the family. And I think a 45-day plan in isolation is not necessarily the best option either. Because again, you want the input of, you know, the family and others to inform that plan. So again, I think it's a shift in practice and we just have to continue to be, you know, push, you know, for that level of consistency, especially at the high school level.
And looking at those unexcused absences and the number of students that have more than three, more than 10, I really think that if the work is put into those attendance improvement plans, I think you're going to see an improvement in attendance. Ms. Saavedra did it there, that's an opportunity to sit down, have all the right people in the room, to have that conversation with the student, to see how they can get them to come back to school and stay in school and consistently. So, and, and just so you know, as part of our audits, if there are attendance improvement plans that campuses have developed, we are asking more questions. We are asking about, you know, are you meeting with the student? Like your plan says you were going to do this, show us how you've been doing that. So that's just part of the test is, is there a plan to begin with? And if there is a plan, okay, let's make sure you really are implementing or what you're doing. And it's not just one of those checklist where you're just submitting the plan and then there's no follow-up. I mean, there needs to be more work than just developing the plan itself. And we're looking for that.
Which is why, as we look at our entitlement money, it, it may be that we, we need to invest in, in staffing that is specifically focused in making sure that we've got solid systems and we've got tiered approaches to address, you know, kids who are dealing with chronic absenteeism and then just really working attendance as a whole. Because our high schools are larger organizations. And if you think about Coronado and Franklin, they have significantly larger numbers than most of our other high schools. So while they have more assistant principal staffing as well, I do believe that it becomes a, you know, a, a challenge to consistently keep up with the amount of activity when you think about the day-to-day operation of, you know, 3,000 to 2,500 kids, you know, in each one of those, each one of those high schools, so.
Dr. Lever? Yeah. In terms of thinking through how policy affects it, at what point do we say as an administration that there is a, there's a policy issue that needs to be changed in terms of granting credit for classes that are unattended or underattended, I should say? And then on top of that, reading the audit report for Coronado in particular, a lot of the feedback that came from the principal in particular, I think is, you know, there's communications, as you're saying, with regard to parents. How do we motivate parents to make sure that they're on top of, of this issue with their kids? So I'm, I'm just wondering if, if it's that or if it is an issue of policy where, where parents might feel, might need to feel a little more motivated from the policy level? Is that something that is even on the table for us or is that something that we can't do?
Well, I, I think that we can always consider other alternatives. I know that there's been a lot of discussion and, and I, I think that many point to the quick fix being that we need to default to the 90% rule, which would be, you know, a policy issue. You know, we're a district of innovation and, you know, that is something that we've chosen not to entertain, right? That 90% rule. However, part of the work that we've done in bringing on, you know, new staff that, that is overseeing attendance is to bring back all of the system controls that are part of what you would have in place to meet the 90% rule so that we're working attendance in those ways. I would share that the challenge with attendance post-pandemic is nationwide in terms of attitudes from parents and the importance of, you know, and it's not in a malicious way, it's just that the mindset has shifted and, and parents don't see school attendance as, as compulsory as they used to in the past and the way that, that we grew up. So I think that we, you know, that's always, always something that's up for consideration. So, um, I think that we, you know, that's always, always something that's up for consideration for us to consider if that is, you know, the teeth that need to be behind. But I do believe that even without that policy, there are ways that we can, um, build bridges with parents to understand. I think that we, you know, um, can make concerted efforts to, um, institute, you know, I, I would say, uh, attendance campaigns to talk. Because I, I think that something that was pretty telling for us, uh, when we did our Board Leadership Academy a, a year ago, was that there were some parents that said that they didn't realize, um, funding and how that relates to attendance. And so I think that there are ways for us to impress upon parents, not necessarily just credit-wise, but just in general, that here are the important reasons why your kids need to be in school. Number one is the number one predictor of student success. But the second part is that, um, when they don't go to school, we stand to lose resources as a school district that we can no longer then invest back into your child, right? You know, and so I think that some of those, uh, campaigns, uh, would serve us well. But, you know, we can always have a deeper discussion about policy and whether it's time for us to truly consider, um, you know, bringing that back or not.
And I, I remember when the 90% policy was in place, so I, I do remember there were some issues with, rather than, it, it is a consequence, but you still have to go through the process if a student does have more than, than, uh, 10% of the absences, you still have to go through the process of going through a hearing. And a lot of times if the student was passing, they were just given credit. So I think that you still needed to have a lot of the processes you currently have in place, like the, you know, notice of absence, the 45 attendance day plan, monitoring at the campus level, at central office level to see, so you can be more proactive and you don't wait till the end of the semester or the end of the year to determine if you're going to give the student credit. So I think some of those controls are in place, it's just doing it. I think the operation, the, the, the actual doing it at the campus level, um, still needs to happen. And then after that, if we still have, you know, a truancy issue, I think Ms. Saavedra will have more information to determine if it's time to go for a policy or if something else is needed. But if we see that the plans aren't being implemented, that's, that's part of that system already that should be done. So it's like you're jumping over several steps, wanting to go to the end, but you need to have some of these interventions in place and, and doing, do them.
Trustee Hernandez?
Along the same lines of what, what Ms. Martinez and Ms. Saavedra and Dr. Lever had mentioned, I see it as a challenge, but yet this challenge can be an opportunity. And for the longest time, being on that, um, ad hoc committee for academics, I remember way back then, it was like two or three years ago, we saw the patterns with the ninth graders and such. And with that, Ms. Saavedra, I think it's, it's an opportunity for us to try to get those kids in that age group, seventh and eighth and ninth grade, to tell them how much more fun it'll be at the high school level, once you get there, once we can get through to the sixth, seventh and eighth grade requirements. Once you come to the ninth grade, you're going to be prepared enough and have enough confidence and, um, know-how or whatever they may need or whatever involvement they want. And let them know that it's fun to come to school and, you know, so they can learn. That's the way I looked at it. And another way, as Ms. Martinez had mentioned, when I was in the grant world, believe it or not, you're, you're going to laugh at me for saying this, but getting the grants was easy to me. I, I could, we could get the grants. It was just like Ms. Martinez mentioned. It's implementing what you say you're going to do. And if you can't, if you're writing there on paper, you're going to do this. I think we need to follow through with whatever that they're wanting to do to make themselves successful because otherwise then we're failing and we're failing those students on a one-to-one or if not, on an overall picture. But I see it as an opportunity for you all to focus in on those sixth, seventh, eighth graders. By ninth grade, they're ready. And, um, I've just been wanting to say that for years. Thank you.
Trustee Beals?
Yes. Thank you so much for all that information. It's all great information. Seeing that, what was it, like 80, 89% of the, um, absence were Fridays for high schoolers? Is that for all high schools or mainly just the fresh, all high schoolers or mainly just the freshmen? Like 84, that seems like a lot.
It's for all high schoolers.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
And in looking at the overall data, because I shared that with Ms. Saavedra as well, kind of for the, all of the high schools, all district-wide, that is a, a pattern. So it's, it's, it's the, where you see the most common attendance issues is district-wide, ninth grade and district-wide Fridays.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's, that's a lot. I kind of had been, I, I heard that this was going to be an issue. And so as someone who has experienced the high school life now with one of my kids, I do see that like the, going from middle school to high school, all of a sudden, it's like eighth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, there's structure, they're told what to do. And then high school, there's so much freedom that they don't know what to do with that freedom. So when it comes down to, um, coming up with ideas and, and maybe implementing new things, I would love to be part of that discussion. Mainly because it is so fresh. And having experienced this so recently, um, I feel like I have, my, the wheels are turning right now, you know? And so this is really exciting, um, these conversations because, um, this is, we're just trying to, all of us have been doing a really good job at, um, making sure that the kids, all of our students' needs are met and, um, in every way. And so, uh, this is really exciting for me. This is why I came on the board and I would love to be part of that discussion if, if possible.
I mean, the one additional thing that I would share is that, um, I want the board to recall that we have, um, a group of student leaders across every, um, campus at the high school level. And they are in year two of work that they're doing, um, with, um, sense of belonging and relationships between students and adults. And they have really dug into the data and are really looking from a peer perspective, from a student perspective, what are the things that really inhibit students from feeling that sense of belonging? Or from, you know, um, being able to nurture, um, healthy relationships with adults on the campus? Because they do know that both of those things impact a student's motivation to come to school consistently, right? And so I think that there are those things that will also help us, uh, kind of attack this, um, this challenge. And, uh, as you said, um, we have an opportunity to, to make a change and really impact and, and figure out what is it about that ninth grade experience that we can improve, uh, to motivate kids to be in school more consistently? And then Fridays, well, that, that, we'll tackle that one too.
And I could tell you, we're seeing the trend of Fridays. What's, what's interesting about Coronado is that they, their ninth grade isn't as bad as other schools. I mean, their issues at the 12th grade level for Coronado, so they're kind of outside of how other schools are looking because it's, it's unique, it's different. But I think looking at the data, you know, as campus administrators can look at those dashboards, look at the data, really drill down to say, okay, well, my freshman, maybe they're doing something right with the freshman. And like Ms. Saavedra said, like bringing everyone to kind of say, okay, what are you doing? Because your freshmen seem to be doing okay, but you're doing something with your seniors that I'm maybe not doing. So I think looking at the data overall at the district and then looking at those outliers where campuses maybe are doing better or, or they're not doing as well in other areas, it's, uh, looking at data, it's awesome. I mean, you can drill down and really see what, what the data tells you. And of course, like Ms. Saavedra, you really need to look at more than that. You can look at student surveys, you can look at meet with students during the 45 attendance play, uh, plans development, et cetera. Just rambling, so I'll stop now.
Well, thank you so much, Myra. We always appreciate your audit meetings and your reports, so thank you. And, uh, Ms. Saavedra, I think we'll have to schedule something on attendance as it, as we go through just to continue monitoring it and I think pursue what Trustees Hernandez, Beals and Lever brought up. And with that, we do have a safety meeting, guys, so I'm going to call this meeting out. So I'm going to close this meeting at 11:45. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate all your hard work and happy new year.
Thank you.